Or transmit whatever you want. Good evening. This is the meeting of the Harwich Planning Board for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. This meeting of the Planning Board will be held in person and may be available as a live broadcast on Channel 18. Members of the public with an interest in any portion or specific item on the agenda should plan for in-person attendance. I'd like to notice, make an announcement about the recording law. According to Massachusetts law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, who will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. I see nobody who is indicating a desire to record. So I would like to call this meeting to order. And looks like we have present Mrs. Maslowski, Mr. McParland, Mr. Harris, Mr. Chadwick, and myself. As we just adopted from our last meeting, a pledge of allegiance. Would you all like to rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we opened tonight with a public hearing from an item that was continued. Item PB 2021-10, Eastward MBTLLC as applicant seeks to modify an open space residential development special permit, PB 2013-24, under Section 325-51.E of the Code of the Town of Harwich to authorize access to 26 Crocker Rise. Assessors' parcel ID 116-116-A2-12 via a proposed shared driveway located on the abutting property at 28 Crocker Rise. Assessors' parcel ID 116-A2-13. Ms. Ladue, I see you're here to present.
Mr. Chair, may I add something before you begin? Just so the applicant understands, which I think she does, in order to approve the special permit modification, there would be five affirmative votes needed. So, you know, generally you would just seek the consent of the applicant, understanding that, or if they would want to continue again.
I understand.
Understood? Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Susan Ladue from Eastward Companies here tonight to represent this application. Not even sure how many members of the board were here when the original subdivision was...
I think we have one.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Two.
Okay, okay. Well, good. So I won't rehash too much history, but it was an open space residential subdivision. And one of the conditions, and it's actually on the plan itself, is that there would be a shared driveway for lots 13 and 14. What we didn't really foresee at the time, because those were panhandles, we thought it would work best to have a shared driveway, and it has worked out great. One house has been on Lot 14 for several years, and we just finished a house on Lot 13 and actually got the CO yesterday. And it's worked out perfectly. And I've applied for a building permit on Lot 12. And it has direct frontage. It's not a panhandle lot, frontage on the cul-de-sac. But once we took a look at the topo of the lot, we thought it would be nice for it to use the shared driveway. Because the shared driveway, and I think it's included in your packet, the driveway easement plan, it begins on Lot 13 and then shifts over to Lot 14. So the access for Lot 12 would be directly onto where it starts at the cul-de-sac, instead of creating another curb cut opening, which we thought would be just two clustered together. And we've got owners who are in agreement on the lots that already use the driveway. They're fine with the shared driveway arrangement. So when I talked with John about how to handle this with the board, knowing I'd need to come back to the board for some sort of relief or approval, he recommended wisely to me to seek an amendment of the decision of the Planning Board for the open space subdivision, which would be a change in that condition to allow the access from Lot 12 onto that shared driveway. So that's it. I can go through, I think you have my letter of May 18th, and just, you know, our reasons for doing that. And we feel that it would be superior to creating additional and additional driveway opening onto Crocker Rise, the cul-de-sac. And without creating that extra curb cut opening, it will maintain the rural character of the lot, less disturbance, create less disturbance to the topography of the lot, because it does sort of, if you see the lot plan that I've given you, site plan, it does go down toward the subdivision, or toward the cul-de-sac, less disturbance to that topography, and maintain the natural buffer at the front of this lot, and will provide safe access to all homes using the shared driveway. And then again, I did submit the easement plan, so you can see where the driveway is located on both lots and how it would enter onto the shared driveway. Otherwise, that's my presentation, if you have any questions.
John, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. I'll, I have this plan up, and I can get the other plans up as well. This is the Crocker Rise, or Hidden Cove, or Cove Road Extension Plan that was approved almost a decade ago. And I've circled essentially the lots in question. The westernmost lots, 14 and 13, as a note on this plan, as part of the special permit and subdivision approval, were allowed to have a shared driveway. And this was a cluster subdivision, so that makes even more sense. Along comes, and there is actually a shared driveway installed there, essentially over the panhandle portions of lots 13 and 14. I think those are addressed as 27 and 28 Crocker Rise. The modification before you is to take that Lot 12, which is directly east of those, and have that benefit in the shared driveway as well, which appears, you know, consistent with the purposes of an open space subdivision, but the purposes for which the subdivision, and specifically the cluster subdivision, was initially approved. So basically, the shared driveway goes over the panhandle portions of 13 and 14. There would be a driveway spur for 12 that goes kind of directly north to Lot 12. There's another spur that either does or will go directly north to 13, and then the shared driveway kind of terminates at the westernmost lot, Lot 14, coming all the way from the end of the cul-de-sac of Crocker Rise. And I will pull up those other plans, like I said, and if you'll just excuse me, this is kind of one of the older, slower computers, so... This is Lot 12, when I get it aligned here. Okay. So this is what the access would look like if it weren't for the alternative access. So it would come off Crocker Rise and go directly to the house. Really what's before you, though, is this proposal for kind of an alternate access, which would come off that existing paved driveway, which is in the panhandle portion of the neighboring lot. And then it would go directly up as a driveway to this 26 Crocker Rise. I agree with everything Susan has said about the benefit of this particular driveway, consistent with the purpose of an open space subdivision. It preserves natural area, it preserves character. It, you know, even goes to the extent of benefiting circulation and transportation in the development, because with fewer curb cuts, there are fewer potential, you know, interactions between vehicles or pedestrians. Both under the local subdivision control rules and regulations and the zoning bylaw, the shared driveway has a cleared, both height area and width area cleared to 16 by 16, which is kind of the standard we look at under the zoning bylaw and the subdivision rules and regulations for adequate access for not just the owners of the properties and visitors, but also emergency vehicles. There were some photos that were submitted to you as well. They're on the website as well. That gives you an indication of what that looks like. I think really, if they took access from their frontage, as, you know, one would normally do, you would have to take out what I would call a berm or hillock that exists, and really kind of change the character out there. So this, especially where you have an existing paved driveway, it really just seems, you know, to be a superior access. And especially where you had the shared driveway arrangement approved in the first instance by the Planning Board under the subdivision and special permit over a decade ago. I prepared a staff report for you with what I would recommend as findings and conditions. There are really no special conditions to the approval, I would suggest, other than the fact that the driveway easement plan, which was included in this alternate access plan, be specifically referenced, that the work, essentially the modification of the subdivision, is to allow 26 Crocker Rise to also be a shared driveway, and that the work and that access to 26 Crocker Rise be according to the plans, that driveway easement plan, and this alternate access plan. And then in normal course, the decision will be recorded with the Registry of Deeds. It will run with the property. In this particular case, I don't think there needs to be some special motion. But I would also record those particular plans with the decision itself.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rodman. Do we have any questions on the board?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think you could have just done it. I don't want to have my planning director fall out of his chair over there, but I think you could have just done this.
I really do. And...
Okay. Cut tape.
Is that called tipping a decision?
No, 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 no. Really, I mean, reading it all, you know, I read it before tonight we've had this material. And, fine. So if there's any question in your mind, I'm prepared to approve.
You don't say.
Have either lots 13 and 14 been sold, or are they under contract?
They're both sold. One has been occupied for several years now in Lot 14. And Lot 13, as I said earlier, we just received the certificate of occupancy yesterday. The homeowners have been chomping at the bit to move into their house.
Right, but you really know about this?
Oh, sure, yes. Yes, they're well aware. Yes, they're fine.
Makes me happier with it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you folks do the building, right? I mean, your company, you're other builders.
Yes, this home is, will start out as one of our speculative homes for sale. And if things have been going the way they've been going, I'm sure it will become a custom quickly. It's, yeah, well, I don't need to tell any of you how it's been. So, not complaining, not complaining. But it's, yeah, right now, it's not a custom home.
Yes.
Henry.
I just think it makes sense.
Me too.
So it seems like a no-brainer in my view.
Craig.
Just a question for my edification. How does the frontage work for those two houses that exist there? The frontage isn't on, it doesn't look like it's actually on the cul-de-sac on Crocker Rise. Looks like it's off the shared driveway.
No, the frontage for 12, 13, and 14 are all on the cul-de-sac of Crocker Rise. 13 and 14 are panhandle lots. Under the current regulations, you couldn't have two panhandles together. You could at the time. So they're both, they're not 150 feet, they're whatever it is, 35 feet. This was also a cluster subdivision where you can reduce those requirements. And in fact, Lot 12 takes, it has frontage directly on the cul-de-sac without a panhandle, but it's reduced to 50 feet. That can be done under a cluster. So technically, they all have, that's another important, I'm glad you mentioned it, it's another important consideration in the bylaw. It's not as if the shared driveway goes over lots that don't have legal frontage. All of these lots have legal frontage created under the subdivision law. But the actual access is by way of this shared driveway. And I did, you know, when the application came in, I did check the Registry of Deeds. There are sufficient easement rights of record to allow for this. And I think as a belt and suspenders matter, Eastward brought in a consent from the owner of 28 Crocker Rise, which is Lot 13, or Lot, I'm sorry, 14.
13.
13.
Yeah. Yes, because where the shared driveway comes in, it's on Lot 13, and that's where we'll be coming off of it. We won't be on Lot 14 at all.
You'll be, your driveway off of the easement driveway will go somewhere through the woods that are shown, maybe by the cam that's out there, somewhere in that area.
Yes, that, yes, it will be. And that's basically the way, when I talked with Mr. Seppi, who is the owner of Lot 13, just so he would know, I said, yeah, it's the porta potty. It's out there. That's where the driveway will be. Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, I don't think we have any ambiguity here. Shall we entertain?
We move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Okay.
So I move that in case number 2021-10, that we adopt the recommended findings and conditions of approval set forth in the staff report, and that we grant further modification to the U.S. Special Permit for the Crocker Rise Open Space Cluster Subdivision to allow 26 Crocker Rise, also known as Lot 12, access over an existing shared driveway subject to said conditions.
Second. Any further discussion? Why don't we take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? Congratulations. Makes too much sense. You're not supposed to go that quickly. And I think of all the, personally, I think of all the economies they're going to have in that first snowfall. I just want to... Excellent, great. Our next item this evening is an A&R in a public meeting for PB 2021-08, Eastward MBTLLC as applicant seeks approval to reconfigure three existing lots into five lots as set forth in MGL Chapter 41, Section 81K through GG, more specifically Sections 81P, 81L, and Sections 400-9 and 11 of the Code of the Town of Harwich. Parcels are identified as 16 Bascom Hollow, 1522 Orleans Road, and Parcel 1.4AC Plus and Minus, described by Commissioner's Deed Book 33587, Page 218, and shown as Parcel Number 7 in Plan Book 686, Page 11. The parcels, as shown on Assessors' Map 97, Parcels B2-12 and -3, and owners unknown, respectively. The parcels are in the R-R and W-R zoning districts. The plan is entitled Division Plan, dated March 18th, 2021, and stamped by Donald T. Poole, PLS.
Susan Ladue again from Eastward Companies with the A&R plan. If you're, I think most of you are familiar, we subdivided, created the Bascom Hollow subdivision. I think it was 2018 now. And we developed the road. I believe we have all the lots released from the covenant, and we're about ready to start on one of the last two or three lots in the subdivision. We acquired the adjacent property, which is a triangular piece of land. We cleared the title and purchased this lot, and if you can see it, it's dotted, and it appears as a triangular piece with frontage on Route 39. Bascom Hollow is an eight-lot subdivision. We are going to add this triangular piece to what was Lot 8, and do a little bit of reconfiguring, actually, no, create another little triangular piece, and then reconfigure Lot... It was a separate lot from, it was 1522 Orleans Road, which was separate from the subdivision. So from this triangular piece, trying to explain it easily.
Yeah, it is on the screen behind you as well.
Are we talking about Lot 10 here?
Yes.
The triangular piece in the center? Okay.
Yes.
And the dotted lines are the...
Going east to west.
Right, okay.
Yes, that was the triangular piece we acquired. So when we combine it with what remained undeveloped, so to speak, in the Bascom Hollow subdivision, we're creating basically two new lots. That Lot 8A was Lot 8 in Bascom Hollow. Lot 11 was 1522 Orleans Road, which has a little house and a garage on it. So Lots 9 and 10 are the two new lots in the subdivision. So it made sense to us to combine them with the subdivision rather than, and not have any access onto Route 39 for safety reasons as much as anything else, and then make them part of the subdivision. It's turned out to be a pretty nice subdivision, and we just thought we'd add to it and be able to develop these lots. So we're asking for the approval of the A&R plan, and we do know that this was a funny subdivision, because we thought the sewer was going into this area. So four lots were restricted to a community system. The other lots, if, when developed, would go in the sewer. That's been delayed somewhat, and I try to keep tabs on it, and I'm not always up to speed. But we did come back with a modified plan that the Board of Health approved to allow the remaining lots to be on individual systems until such time that the sewer's in, and then everybody needs to hook up.
Which is true.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Right. So we understand with these additional lots, we need to work it out with the Board of Health, but they have the frontage, the area that they need on a developed road to be approved as an A&R plan. Okay, that's about it for my presentation, to make it too long.
Okay. Mr. Rodman.
Yeah, I'm glad we dealt with Hall's path at the last meeting, because that can serve as kind of a touchstone for the Planning Board dealing with A&Rs. In this case, I have no qualms recommending to you that you endorse this A&R, and further telling you that you're really mandated to endorse this A&R, because the roads you're dealing with, one is an improved county road, and the other is an improved subdivision road that this board approved. And the lots that are affected by this plan all have the required amount of lineal frontage on one of those two roads, which absolutely are passable and would provide vital access to those lots. What Susan was talking about there, you saw that dash line, the dash lines, those were the old lot lines in the subdivision, and that parcel that was a stranger to the title of the subdivision that Eastward has now acquired. So the way I would characterize it before is there were essentially three lots, and now there are to be four building lots, because that lot that was a stranger to the title, it was a building lot. It just wasn't part of the subdivision. And then that little parcel A will be, is proposed to be conveyed to an abutter. It doesn't need frontage, because it's not a building lot.
Ah, okay.
So just to clarify in my own head, you're just changing the lot lines and going from wider parcels to deeper parcels, essentially?
Well, I think it's incorporating the new land.
Right.
The big purpose is incorporating that new land, and you're right, it does reconfigure the parcels. And I would, I think your characterization is fair, that they're deeper. Yeah. I will make one note...
It makes them bigger.
Yes.
Yeah, bigger, deeper. I will, you know, one note in addition to the health, and I don't know, you know, really, the Planning Board doesn't have direct jurisdiction over health like it has during a subdivision process, but I think it's a good FYI. We've discussed that with Eastward as well, Katie O'Neill and myself, the Health Director, and they understand that. I don't know what form it will take and what the requirement will be. They know they need to deal with the Health Department because of those existing health requirements that applied to the existing subdivision, and now it carries forward to a modification. I don't know what that modification will be. They will deal with it. And just another FYI, and this is in the staff report. If Eastward chooses to take access off this Lot 10 from Bascom Hollow rather than Route 39, they will have to seek a special permit from that, an alternate access special permit. You see that there's a 35-foot kind of stub to Bascom Hollow on the plan from Lot 10. So that's not where the legal frontage is, because in order to get that 35 feet, a panhandle lot, you actually have to go through the subdivision process with the Planning Board. So it's not a, it's not a approved panhandle lot, but it does connect to Bascom Hollow. They have rights in it, and actually through a special permit for alternate access, they could seek access from that, from that side of it. But their legal frontage at this point would be from Route 39, and they're showing 150 foot, which is the requirement.
Any comments from the board? Questions?
No, sir.
Seems pretty straightforward again.
Please, straightforward.
I suggest we then make the proper motions.
So I'll make a motion that the plan entitled Division Plan, 1522 Orleans Road, Route 39, Harwich, Mass., prepared by Clark Engineering LLC, with a revised date of 4/23/21, stamped by Donald T. Poole, PLS, April 28th, 2021, does not depict a subdivision, and I move that we endorse the plan as not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Second. I have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye. By aye. All against? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Good, quick evening for you, Ms. Ladue.
Hopefully for you also.
Yeah.
I should have done this at our last meeting, because we did have an A&R that was endorsed. But the old practice of the board was to endorse, you know, while the iron was hot. So should we take this moment, and Susan, would you wait?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Need him to say to you, are you sure we can all come back? You know?
I did that, I'm sorry, I did that, too. I requisite Sharpie, so...
I think we got pretty well-trained with COVID about the, you know, multiple trips coming in.
I'll put the date in after, but there's a...
Did you need a paper copy that has signed also?
We need to sign a couple of papers.
Yeah, I remember.
While in the Mylar.
Okay. Let me see if I have it in my file. Elaine probably set me up with them.
Yeah.
While we're doing this, did anybody get a chance to go through the minutes? I didn't really go through them until we got here.
I looked at them, I didn't see anything.
My only question was, when I just scanning through, is the chairman allowed to make a motion to close the meeting?
Color doesn't matter in this one, does it?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
And I think that's more for your file, John, and I take the Mylar and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll make Elaine happy.
We have to keep Elaine happy.
Thank you.
Question about the name change?
Do they not care at the registry?
I haven't gotten any notification from them. I checked the registry site, didn't, I thought, well, maybe they'll make a change, or...
I almost lost it.
I don't know. Actually, I have to file something.
My experience is they have a form, and it's called...
I'll go back on... All right, I'll go back online.
This is to act like things were in person.
Well, right. So I'll go online, I'll give them a call tomorrow, and I'll follow up with Elaine on that.
7:13, is that correct?
It is.
It's only 7:00. It's actually July 13th.
All right.
I'm gonna take that one here.
Sounds good. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you all again.
See you, too.
Nice to see you in person.
Well, I live in Vermont, you know, so...
Really?
Remote was wonderful for me.
You didn't see Caleb?
I know, I know. Well, sort of, right? Sort of, I know.
We know he's there.
Where? I, we've always, well, we've had a home since 2003, and so when we said when our boys were on the run and self-sufficient, we'd sell our house here and move there. So we did that last September, so it was during the height of all the...
We're in Vermont, may I ask?
It's just outside of Middlebury.
Oh, nice.
On Lake Champlain, on the west coast of New England.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good luck with it.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. But I'll be back when I need to be.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, have a good night.
You, too.
So our next item of business, our... So our next item of business are is the approval of the minutes from our June 22nd meeting. Are there any comments or any additions, deletions?
Move to approve the minutes of June 22nd.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Dave?
On the fourth page where it says, Mrs. Lazlofsky, move to not endorse the A and R. I thought Bill Stokes, didn't Bill Stokes recommend that or did you make the motion and he recommended that he didn't agree?
I did the motion.
Okay.
Right.
I remember Bill first phrased the issue, but anyway, that's fine.
I know, I had made the motion, that was all.
Okay.
That was a complicated meeting.
It was, yeah.
Sure was.
I'd rather approve the minutes before I read them.
Well, again, please cut the tape. No, very good. So take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, aye? It's unanimous. We have the zoning Board of Appeal opinions in our packet. I don't know if that requires any comment, just there for to for us to attend to. Old business, do we have any old business on the agenda, not that I know of?
So I don't have old business, but we should on our next agenda, we should have reorganized tonight, so we just want to put it on our next agenda.
Okay.
Because we're under the charter we're required to do it every July.
The other thing is that, and I'm speaking personally because I am remiss in this, I was unable to update my ethics test online. I was wondering if I'm the only one. We're supposed to be done like May. Yeah, in April, I guess. I'm past the grace period, so I just come in clean here, I'll take care of it before our next meeting. And if anybody else has, I think.
We did that in the clerk's office, Mary.
Um, you may have done it in the clerk's office a while ago, but we had to, we had 2021 is an is another municipal year. Every two years we have to redo the test.
Right.
So.
I think I'm okay, but I'll get on.
Well, you gotta do it online and then sign off, so that's.
You have to print a certificate that you've done it. I can help you with it at some point if you need it, just after after work.
Yeah.
Do you have a record of who has and who has not?
I don't, but we could, I could ask Elaine, but she would probably go to the town clerk.
Anita, I think.
I did it.
Because didn't they eventually have to end up with her?
I just want to make sure.
I know, I sent it to you, but I think it had to end up with her.
So I suspect, yes, Anita usually asks for all the chairs to send them in, so Joe, I suspect you haven't done it.
I suspect I haven't too. All right, well, this is something we'll, you know, clean up next meeting, for sure. Any briefings or reports from other commissions or boards?
CPTC's public hearing on our mandatory annual public hearing is Thursday night in this room if anybody is interested in coming and telling the Community Preservation Committee what they what we should be doing with our money, so we're happy to hear from everybody, so.
You've got a lot of money too.
That is, well, we've spent a lot of money too.
Right.
So.
I'm kidding, I know.
No, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of need for it.
Oh, true.
Really, so so that is Thursday night at 6:00 PM here in this room. If anyone is interested, and I'll just put a plug in if anybody is interested in joining HDHC, we have openings, so I'll throw that plug in there while I'm sitting here too because that means tomorrow.
And I take it everybody's paying attention to what's going on, the selectmen's meetings these days with the other zoning issues about entertainment license and liquor licenses that are now kind of blowing up. I think this is something that we're gonna potentially face at some point or another in zoning, bylaws as they may be changing, so just keep your ears to the ground on that, so.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I lived and and worked in Quincy, Massachusetts, and I think, I don't know if anybody's gonna respond to this, but I think that the system they have in Quincy for licensing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I I sat and watched that meeting when they went on through all that stuff and the licensing. They what their system is very interesting. They have a licensing board made up of the Chief of Police, the Chief of the Fire Department, and the City Clerk is the chairman, and then those three pick two other citizens in the community. So it's a five-man board. Now, because the city is a lot bigger and there's a lot more licenses involved and so forth, they meet every single week. But as I was watching that the other night, I because if I appeared in front of that Quincy group once in my practice, I did it 50 times, you know?
Yeah.
And I just thought that that our Board of Selectmen should think about whether or not they should be the licensing authority.
Right.
Or whether or not they should appoint a licensing, whatever you wanna call it, licensing board, licensing commission.
That would need to be a whole charter change.
Right, would it, Mary? Yeah.
It's a whole charter change and and really, if you think about it, the way they do it, they do, they seek building department approval, they seek police and fire approval on all those licensing.
I know, I know.
So they're still getting that input, but yeah, it would be a charter change, so.
Yeah.
Well, there'd be a different political dynamic, number one, and number two is I think that there's a lot of churn right now. You know, there's the town is growing, there's a lot of there's a change in the dynamic and.
I think I think entertainment issues become an issue every summer and every.
Sure they do, yes, I couldn't agree more.
It's just, it's the nature of the beast. It's the.
Right.
It's 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 what happens and it happens everywhere. It's not, this is, I don't think our situation is unique if you if you go, you know, town to town. It's slightly different because our Harwich Fort, when I was a kid, wasn't the place you went and now it is again. You know, it used to be the, it was it was the the Sword and Shield was the, but the only restaurant down in.
Downtown.
In the fort at that point, so.
Old chima.
Yeah, but I mean, it was just, there were one or two and there wasn't.
Right.
You know, it wasn't the.
There wasn't all the hubbub.
Draw that it is now, but it's a good problem to have, I think.
Right.
I I often drive through downtown and I'm flabbergasted with with the number of people on the sidewalks and the traffic and.
I went I went by Saturday late afternoon and I was stunned at how many people around considering the weather. And it was packed. You couldn't find a parking space if you wanted to. But again, the businesses, it's a good problem for them to have.
Yeah, we wish them well.
But I don't think it's unique, I think it's.
Well, it just seems that maybe it's the social media that adds a little bit more of the din to the to the hubbub, but I'm just hearing more, I mean, I don't remember hearing it so much like 10 years ago, five years ago, but.
But if you talk to people that that lived on Pleasant Street and Cross Street.
Where I lived.
And grew up there or lived there 10, 20, 30, 40 years, there was, that's what happens when you live in a village, right?
Right.
You know, that's you know, that's part of the draw for a lot of people too, is why they live in.
That's right.
In in Harwich Fort, so that they do have all that activity around in our steps, so it's it's the push and pull.
Right.
It's why some people live in cities and some people live in suburbia.
Do you want to motion adjourn?
Love one.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Can I add a few things before?
Oh, please, sorry.
Sorry, John.
Oh, that's okay. So the first thing about the zone, I did look at the zoning board agenda, there's nothing I think that is of particular interest to.
I read through it, right.
Planning Board, yeah. There are some interesting things there, but nothing I think is of particular interest to the the Planning Board. There's a CPTC workshop shop on drafting zoning amendments, July 21st, $20, which we have funding for if anybody wants to participate.
Where is it, John?
It's it's a webinar.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so you can participate online. Maybe I'll have Elaine send that out to the members tomorrow if you're.
Would you be so kind?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just looking, I'm glad Mary mentioned that about the reorganization. It's in the charter, it's also in state law for for planning boards. Interestingly, it calls for a a chair and a clerk. I think we use a chair and a vice chair, which is effectively the same. But one thing I've dealt with with boards my entire career is if things seem to work and everybody's okay with it, just keep your your officers. So we can take a vote, but I guess we need to know, what do you, I'm sure you are all just so impressed with Duncan in his first year as chair and, you know, are you interested in serving again? Because you can, you know, next meeting, we can take that vote, but.
Right. No, I'm I'm happy to serve at the will of the board and, you know, and the board is.
And Alan's not here, so I'll say Alan's probably thrilled to still serve as vice chair.
Oh, I can, I'm sure, I think you can say that with a lot of confidence.
So I'll put that on the agenda.
He's done it for quite a while, so.
Oh, he's been, he's great.
Alan's done it for quite a while.
And we don't have regulatory matters that have been filed such that we could notice them for the next meeting. So the next meeting is going to be some, you know, grab bag of different things I want to discuss with you, maybe some housekeeping matters about the way, you know, the state law lot affords a good deal of latitude in how you approve minutes or how you actually endorse plans, you can delegate that. So I just want to have those sort of discussions with you that we don't have a regulatory matter for us for next meeting. I also wanted to report to you on the West Harwich Special District Guidelines. So I have actually gone through those, I've spoken with Sarah Korjev, I've given her my markups, but as I was able to kind of ferret out all the details, I think it's pretty close to, you know, getting before you for a public hearing, except for there's a bunch of not just photos, but more importantly, visuals that the Cape Cod Commission is working on to depict, you know, what a what a project consistent with the dimensional guidelines might look like look like in terms of volume or massing. Cape Cod Commission staff is working on that and they're very busy now. Doesn't seem like they will be ready with that until the end of the summer, early fall. So just reporting to you, I guess I wouldn't expect to have a hearing on the DCPC guidelines until early fall at least because the visuals won't be done until that time.
And they'll they'll appear, John?
Yes, they'll, I think what I would like to do is before you have a hearing, have the Cape Cod Commission staff come in.
That's right.
Discuss those with you and then once you're kosher with everything, then have your hearing on the guidelines. And you have the ability to promulgate those guidelines on your own now. They don't have to be incorporated into the zoning, if you remember from the zoning amendment at the most recent town meeting, yeah.
So just out of curiosity, I know we discussed briefly your ideas about the regulations or guidelines and your markups where you, it sounded as though you had a sharper idea about what could be accomplished with that language. Is that, was there any discussion or pushback from the commission or?
No.
No, good.
No, no, but I think those visuals will go a long way.
Right.
Yeah.
So I need to double check and see if she, if Sarah needs any more visuals because I think I gave her a couple hundred, but.
Well, I think it's the photos, but they're actually developing.
Right.
They're doing CAD or what have you.
Right, the geometrics.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they're gonna look beautiful, but they're volumetric. It shows if you have this mass here and this is the historic massing and this is all stuff you know, Duncan, but I think it's one thing to read the zoning, it's another thing giving you an idea of what that might look like on on the ground and what might it look like.
And to make it practicable for somebody who's coming into the department, to the building department who wants to do something.
So John, is the is the point to show like the historic mass and then what could be done if you keep the historic mass versus get rid of the historic mass and start from scratch and.
Yeah.
How it looks on the on the footprint?
Yeah, well, I mean, one of the points is if, you know, your historic building is the is the prominent visual massing, so if you didn't want to overwhelm that primary massing with some addition, what might the addition look like?
Okay.
And 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 working within those setbacks that have been established for the Special District and kind of the parking structure that's been established for that Special District. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, so at least that's moving, but you're not gonna have it, I think, before you as soon as you might have thought, but I I think that's okay.
Great.
So John, a question. So once it's finalized, we will then receive it and as you said, go through it with the commission to better understand and make sure we're comfortable. Then we hold a public hearing and then we vote on it to approve the document and and the material in it. Does it then have to go to annual town meeting or is that then it's done and do we set a date or does it have to go to the state?
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to go to town meeting. So you have the you have rulemaking authority in this matter and you can adopt those guidelines. It's not technically part of the zoning, but I would say it amplifies the zoning that you have in place. It 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 describes or illustrates the zoning you have in place. I don't want to say it doesn't have the force of law because that suggests it's meaningless, but the law is the zoning and these guidelines kind of clarify or illustrate the zoning.
Will we receive the package before the presentation?
Absolutely, you'll receive it and, yeah, you're the board that will, you're the body that finalizes it before it goes to the hearing.
Before Sarah comes in to make.
Yes, yeah, you'll have it.
Have it before that, so.
You'll have it in advance.
Somebody will notify, we'll come pick it up.
Yeah, or we'll send it by email or you'll have it in advance to review.
On a semi-related note, also from the Board of Selectmen last night, the Board of Selectmen agreed to approve a RFP for the schoolhouse in West Harwich. So with, you know, the likelihood of an emphasis on preservational values and how it would discharge that, so it's a town asset that's been owned by the town since 1871 and functioned as a school until World War Two and was has been owned, I mean, it'll be interesting to see, you know, how it gets.
What are they talking about doing with it?
Well, I think that they want to open it up to see what the RFPs are. I mean, they're the group of citizens in West Harwich want to turn it into a community center, take possession of it and then use it, part of it as a satellite for the historical society because they actually have every document, every scrap of paper for every student, every report card, every grade, attendance sheets, photographs, you could kind of reconstruct three generations of life, of village life in West Harwich there and.
Wow.
Considering the fact that buried within about 500 yards of that are people that settled in the 1630s, that whole area and participated in village life all the way, you know, all the way up to today, so it's kind of an interesting architectural incunable, right? Like a old piece from the old times, so.
Well, I know you're interested in the continuing history of things and, yeah, even I have a little, played street hockey there.
Right.
And it was our youth center and.
Right.
From 1958 to 1973, I was just looking at the title, it was conveyed to the VFW by the town and then it came back to title, the town's title.
Is that right? I didn't know that. So was this before the VFW went over there on?
I don't know if it was actually used, it was before my time, but from nine, the titles at 1958 to 1973, there was town meeting authorization, there was a conveyance of the registry of deeds over to VFW.
Because you know, there's a VFW over there on Telegraph, right? Was there a new one put up like, you know?
That that church that's over there.
Right.
Is that an active church? Does anybody know?
Yes, it is owned by a pastor who runs it as a church. They have negligible.
Attendance.
Attendance, but it is a functioning church and it is the oldest continuously functioning Baptist community on the Cape. And it was a hotbed, I won't get into all that. We don't need a history lesson, I'm, I thought those could be at an early meeting, so.
What a word to stop.
It still is.
It still is.
1919, when does that happen?
John, I have a question, different subject. I think a couple of weeks ago, when Elaine sent out a packet, she mentioned something and I'm gonna get this wrong, that you were looking to set up a Dropbox or or something, a different way of allowing us to view the material? Did I get that?
I'm glad you mentioned that because she's kind of done that. I don't know if you've gone on to the website, but I think she made a great change and was relatively simple. On the Planning Board website, there is now a link called Regulatory Applications. You go there and everything is arranged in a project basis, so the two projects we reviewed tonight with their planning board numbers, their PB numbers, there was all the documents associated with them on the website, so you can certainly avail yourself of that, the public can as well.